Good afternoon. It is the appointed hour of four o'clock for our county commission meeting. We're going to honor a couple of people today, and I'm really excited that this many people came out for that.[13.34][13.34](Laughter). No, actually, it is great that you're here, and I, like my fellow commissioners, appreciate your input, and I'm sure we will listen carefully, and thank you for coming. We will begin today's meeting with an invocation that will be offered by Father David Bittman of the St. George Catholic Church. Following the prayer, Under Sheriff James Stanley will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll proceed in that order. Father?
Let us pray. Almighty and eternal God, you have revealed yourself to the nation, God of power and might, wisdom and justice. Through you authority is rightly administered, laws are enacted, and policies pursued. We pray for those serving in the county and the county commission, for all elected officials, and for all those who are entrusted to guard our welfare. May they be enabled by your protection to continue to discharge their duties with honesty and ability. We pray also for those living in Washington County. May they be blessed, may they live in peace, may they strive to promote harmony. We ask these things through Christ our Lord, who lives and reigns with you in unity, the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Father.
Thank you, Father Bittman.
All rise. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated. Thank you.
Okay, I would like to recognize Officers Stanley and Bentley that are with us today. And our first item of business on today's agenda is the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is a means of expediting the consideration of routine items. If a commissioner requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda, those items are placed at the beginning of the regular agenda. Other than request to remove items, a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda is not debatable. Commissioners?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Our first item on the consent agenda is Item A: Consideration of Auditor Approved Claims for Payment for November 20th, 2019 through December 3rd, 2019. Item B: Consideration of Regular Commission Meeting Minutes of November 19th, 2019, and the governing authority of the Rockville-Springdell Fire Special Service District Meeting and the minutes of November 19th, 2019. Item C: Consideration of Administrative Adjustments for Real Property. D: Consideration of Administrative Adjustments for Personal Property. E: Consideration of Applications for Property Tax Abatement, of which there were eight. Consideration of Washington County Holiday Schedule for 2020. Consideration of Regular Commission Meeting Schedule for 2020. Item H: Consideration of a Memorandum of Understanding with St. George City Regarding the Use of Real Property on Bluff Street. And I: Consideration of Cemetery Hill Final Platte. And it seems logical that on Cemetery Hill, that would be a final platte.[268.83][268.83](Laughter).
Very good. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you, Commissioners. It has been moved and seconded that we approve today's consent agenda. All in support of the motion, please state so now.
Aye.
Motion carries. Our first item of business on our regular agenda is Consideration of Purchase Request. Ray, I want to thank you for all that you do, and you went the extra mile today, and I appreciate that. The whole commission recognizes it, and thank you. But we'll let you give your consideration, we'll give you due consideration of the purchase orders now.
Welcome and thank you. Okay. These are all for the sheriff's office this time. The first one is for gift cards for the 2019 Shop With A Cop, and that's a total of $15,750. The next one is for the purchase of a new canine vehicle for 2019 Ford Expedition, and that's a total of $42,163. The next one is a purchase of a Toyota 4Runner. This vehicle is to replace the task force vehicle that was recently in an accident, and that's for a total of $37,831.40. The next one is for some mattresses for the inmates. Now, another one was approved a little bit ago for pretty much the same thing, so we made sure that this wasn't a duplicate. This is a real new purchase, and that's for a total of $16,485. And the final one is for ammunition for the sheriff's office in a total of $28,240.50. And unless there's any questions, that is all I have.
It's a good thing we're buying a new vehicle for the canines, because I wouldn't want it to be a dog.
Right.
Yeah.[400.88][400.88](Laughter).
Just a big crowd, you know? It's a big crowd. Chair, I move that we approve the purchase request presented by Ray.
And I'll second that motion. Mr. Chairman?
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the purchase request as presented. All in support of the motion, please state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number two is kind of a special item. Every once in a while, and we've got two items like this today, we have individuals in the community that rise to a level that really is amazing, and we wish to recognize individuals that give of their time, energy, and effort, make our county and our communities better places to live. Our first recognition is of Mary Esther Putnam, and I've known Mary Esther for quite a while, and what I can tell you about her is she's hardworking. She pays attention to detail, and she's served the residents of Pine Valley for at least 16 years, and probably longer doing other things. But she's outstanding in her field, waiting for Commissioner Oomquist to make some fun about that. But thank you so much. And so, Mary Esther, this plaque says, "Presented to Mary Esther Putnam for her 15 years of dedicated service to the Pine Valley Special Service District, presented by the Washington County Commissioners, Dean Cox, Victor Iverson, and Gil Oomquist." Come up.[516.66][516.66](Applause).
Thank you so much. Very much appreciated. Oh, Debbie, you're right. Well, good. That's one way to... Thank you. Thanks, Billy.
Our next recognition is for Pam Palermo. Pam Palermo, I first got to know, and she's my neighbor, but as she went to work and helped the Chamber of Commerce, and when a change needed to be made there, the board of the Chamber looked around, and there was no question in anyone's mind who would be the replacement director. Pam has just done an outstanding job, not only with the St. George area chamber, but with our entire community and county. And I would be remiss, we're recognizing Pam, but Pam has a shadow, and the shadow's name is John. And John is the faithful husband of Pam, and when I've seen Pam working her heart out on big events, guess who is always right there, working and participating and helping our community be better and stronger? And John?
John's a pretty good caterer, too.
Thank you so much for that. So, this reads, "Presented to Pam Palermo..." Oh, Victor, you're supposed to speak.
No, 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 please.
"...St. George area Chamber President in appreciation and recognition of her dedication to the Washington County community." I'll let you speak about the fair. "Washington County Commissioners, Dean Cox, Victor Iverson, and Gil Oomquist." But I really do think that is worthy of calling out special recognition for...
You know, this county's growing, as all of you know, and, you know, we're really blessed with people that move here. And they move here, and they give their heart to this community, and they just make it a better place. And Pam's one of those people. She's a dear friend of mine, somebody that, you know, when you do the county fair together, you really kind of bond. But we were very good friends before, and I just, I wish I could pass a county ordinance mandating that she had to live here the rest of her life. But unfortunately, Pam has a soul that needs to move on and go to other places, and so she's leaving us, but I hope she's not really leaving us. I hope she comes back often.
I think she is planning on coming back.
So, we really do appreciate you and love you, and thank you so much for everything you've done for Washington County. So, thank you, Pam.
Thank you. Come on up, Pam.[687.11][687.11](Applause).
I don't have a gift for you guys today, but I brought you all these people.[693.01][693.01](Laughter).
Take 'em back.[695.01][695.01](Laughter).
I just, honestly, I just want to say, thank you. I mean, these guys from the very beginning, as soon as I walked into their office and met them for the first time, it was all of ours, and just such support, and I enjoyed so much, real with them. Victor said I mentored him, but I think it's the other way around. He mentored me a lot. I will be back here every year. I suppose today I'm the...
Huntsman Senior.
...the senior rotating board. I'll be here competing every year.
She's not old enough to actually participate, so she's on the board.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you, Pam.[736.01][736.01](Applause).
Okay, we're going to have more than one public hearing today, and the first public hearing is going to be concerning a community development block grant for the year 2020. And I've got some language I have to read. I think it has to be pretty verbatim. And then I will open up, the public can come up and I give their name and speak to the issue that's being discussed. "I, Chairman Cox, hereby open the first public hearing for the CDBG program. This hearing is being called to provide citizens with pertinent information about the Community Development Block Grant Program and allow for discussion of possible applications for the 2020 funding cycle. The grant money must be spent on projects primarily benefiting low and moderate income persons. The Five County Association of Governments, in which Washington County is a member, is expecting to receive approximately $813,000 for this new program year. All eligible activities that can be accomplished under this program are identified in the CDBG Application Policies and Procedures Manual, and interested persons can review it at any time. Eligible activities include examples such as construction of public works and facilities, water and sewer lines, fire stations, acquisition of real property, provision of public services such as food banks or homeless shelters. In the past, Washington County has received 23 grants for projects such as ADA improvement and public buildings, the Enterprise Senior Center, water planning for the Gunlock Special Service District, the Senior Centers Meals on Wheels Vehicles, and the Gunlock Fire Station for the Northwestern Special Service District. A complete list of CDBG projects funded for Washington County can be found on the Five County Association of Government website. The county has handed out its capital investment plan as part of the regional consolidated plan. This list shows which projects the county has identified as being needed in the community. Anyone with questions, comments, or suggestions during the hearing, please come to the podium and identify yourselves by name before speaking. The clerk will include your names in the minutes, and we would like to specifically respond to your questions and suggestions during the hearing. The hearing is now open. Seeing that no one here is ready to speak to the CDBG grant program, I will declare the hearing closed. Thank you. Item number five: A public hearing rezoning on the west side of Interstate 15 at Exit 40 near New Harmony from the A-20 and RA-5 zones to the PDC zone. As we open up this hearing, part of what I just stated for the other one is what we'd still like to do. We'd like you to step to the podium, state your name, and because we've got a lot of people here, and obviously a lot of interest, I'd have a couple of requests for you, and I hope that you'll honor them. Let's limit our comments to two minutes, and let's not repeat the same things over and over. So, I'm going to jot down on a piece of paper that I've got. For example, if we talk about any particular service there may be a question about, or the ability to provide it, I will write that down. If, in my opinion, it has been adequately addressed, then if someone wants to come back and just regurgitate the same thing again, we'll ask them to move on to something that's new that hasn't been addressed, the commission hasn't already heard. We have received a lot of emails. I want you to know that I've read every single one, and I think my fellow commissioners have as well, and we appreciate your taking the time to make us aware of your concerns and to send your comments. It's good to see some participation in government, and local government's really where a lot of the big decisions are made that impact our lives. So, with that said, we will begin the hearing, and if you raise a hand, I will recognize. After you're recognized, come up, and we'll hear your comments. Yes, sir?
Good evening, Chairman Cox and county commissioners. I've been actually asked to represent a group of people. We were kind of under the understanding that we'd have five minutes if we were representing a group, but if you'd like them to take some of these points and bring them up individually, we can.
We could consider that. Which group? How many people are you representing? More than three?
Well, we're representing the Colob Canyon and New Harmony Community Alliance, so it's one that you've obviously heard a lot of communication from, and rather than have members of that committee come up on a regular basis, we just thought we'd try and...
I am totally comfortable with five minutes for you, so go ahead.
Thank you. So, Darren Adair, for the record, 2373 South Old Highway 91, New Harmony, Utah. And really, Commissioners, I wanted to try and boil this down, or we wanted to boil this down to two things that we'd like you to consider this evening. First of all, we'd like you, we recognize that the planning commission has met here in November and has made their recommendations to you, but we'd also like to point out to you that there's also an earlier planning commission that's made a recommendation, and that occurred in February of 2015. Dixie Vision, or Vision Dixie, was put together, and the New Harmony Colob, or Greater, New Harmony Valley Master Plan was put together. And at that time, 94% of the residents voted or spoke out and felt in support of that. Today, we know that about 300 signatures on, although signatures aren't important, binding in any way, it does kind of reaffirm that that group of people still exists with similar opinions. So, the two things that I want, the other thing that I wanted you to keep in mind was that the timing, in that master plan, it talked about the timing for rezoning from residential or agriculture to commercial, and it suggested that that would occur when the need warranted. And I know very quickly, just looking at the plan that the developers put on here, they indicated that the reason that they were putting this request in front of this commission was that they were trying to address the needs as they thought understood them of a half a million visitors entering the park every year. I think that their own traffic study provided some conflict with that, and we recognize that that would, at least during the six months out of the year, be about 3,000 people a day, about 300 people an hour that they're open, and we know that entrance only has like 50 parking spots and 13 camping spots. It's just not one that's going to ever really have a line of cars parking all the way through that. And in trying to address that need, they recommended, which is wonderful if they believe the need is there, they wanted to recommend a facility that would address those needs for restaurants, gas stations, RV, and so forth. With that not being there, with that need being about a sixth of that, what we'd want to, mind you, is that, not necessarily that there wouldn't be commercial at some time, but perhaps that it wouldn't be today, because the need really isn't there, even by their own information. I wanted to quickly read from the New Harmony Plan. It says, "Although it is recognized that the commercial growth could bring revenue and other benefits to the town, New Harmony chooses to live within its means. Rather than risk disruption of its rural charm and peace and quiet views, dark sky nights..." That's why you don't hear us in here asking for infrastructure projects and roads and things like that that often. "There is currently no commercial development or commercial zoning within the city of New Harmony. However, the majority of the residents would be open to some non-disruptive cottage-style home businesses use within the town boundary." That's talking about the town, but one of the things that we did note was that whenever there is an exception or where there's commercial use, it's typically done in incorporated areas, not in the unincorporated parts of the county. If you look up and down I-15, that's about the case with the exception of Exit 42. Now, with that exception, there's been challenges, as you probably well know, with the businesses that have tried to go in there and have not been able to either stay open or stay functioning as originally planned. So, another thing that was part of the fiscal goal that was in that New Harmony Plan was they said, "Review and amend future use plans to avoid the likelihood of redundant or prematurely extending infrastructure." The words there, redundant, like gas stations and restaurants and stores, or prematurely extending infrastructure, such as hotels and stuff, or traffic really demands that. So, we'd like to ask, and I, and point out that you have an opportunity, Commissioners, tonight, to not necessarily say no to commercial development county, but instead say, but is it the right time for it? Is it justified? You have a responsibility to make sure that these services are provided to those tourists that are coming in and the residents in that area. I think the residents have clearly said that they would prefer to drive to the Hurricane Exit or into Cedar to get their gas.
You've got 30 seconds.
Perfect, perfect. And they would prefer to have that remain as rural, especially entering into the park as it is there. So, again, the ask tonight is that this county, this county commission, consider that you have two planning commissions, or two planning bodies that have spoken, one particularly at the gathering all the information from the residents in the area, and the other, of course, through this process that we had last month. And you should know that the second is that please consider limiting that to the exceptions when it warrants it. Look at the developer's request. They may have prematurely submitted their plans. They've owned this property for a long time. I understand where they're at, but they may need to own it a little bit longer, and we'd ask that you would consider that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners, my name is Paul Williams, and I'm a resident of the Black Ridge neighborhood. I would like to speak to two things. One, there's, I believe there are some errors of fact in the proposals that have come forward. And secondly, I'd like to talk about light pollution. I am a volunteer in the Colob section of Zion National Park. I must be very clear, I speak for no one besides myself. It is my understanding, talking to people that I know, that the visitation does not exceed 200,000 people in a year's time, and my volunteer job is as a rover, so like a ranger, I walk the back country trails and talk to the visitors. The people that come, that make up that 200,000, they come in to drive the scenic loop, they turn around, they leave on their way to somewhere else. Those who do take the time to get off the highway and hike the beautiful trails, of which there are only three, are also headquartered somewhere else. They have a base hotel in Springdale or here in St. George, et cetera, and this is a tangent trip for them. Their main purpose in coming was, is the main canyon, and that's why they're staying down there. I own a little, I have a little overnight guesting, and our traffic is not that great, though we have done reasonable things to make it so. The traffic of people will not support a hotel. The second point has to do with light pollution. If you have not yet, you will probably hear issues regarding the sewer system in the plan. Water does not respect property boundaries. Likewise, neither does light. The proposal says, "Nights, dark sky lighting if reasonable." It's not reasonable, it's not going to be reasonable. That is a disingenuous statement, in my opinion. Light will degrade the experience of those who bring money into our county, the visitors to our natural areas, as it will for our neighborhood. We paid, and our property value will suffer...
Two minutes, sir.
Okay, will suffer if light pollution is allowed to go on. A hotel will not work. Light pollution and the property values associated with that must have very thorough consideration, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Would anyone else like to address the county commissioners? Yes, sir, I recognize you. Oh, is that... Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Daniel Foggergrin. I'm the chief ranger at Zion National Park, and I'm here on behalf of Zion National Park, as well as Superintendent Bradybaugh. And for the record, it has been erroneously reported that the park supports this zoning change, and that is just simply false. We are not impartial to it. We actually are opposed to the zoning change. Some of the concerns have been mentioned, but those concerns include the night sky impacts due to increases in light pollution.
Now, we've heard about light pollution, so try to keep your comments on things that we haven't already talked about.
Okay, and then just three others. The Western View Shed from the park is another major concern. I know the proposal for development included a three-story hotel. Even if it was one or two stories, it's going to impact views from the park looking out to the west, to the Pine Valley Mountains. And the third one, and this is probably one that's most important to the park, is the fact that a gas station and other types of businesses in such proximity to the entrance to a park, it's not conducive to the values that the park espouses. And so, while gas stations and other businesses do co-locate at the entrance, like Springdale, for example, in this case, it's in such proximity that it doesn't give that welcome mat that visitors tend to expect, see as they come to the parks. And then finally, and this impacts me and my staff directly, is our limited security. We don't have a lot of law enforcement. That is our northern district. It has a small staff. We just don't have the staff to protect that 24 hours, and if we bring in additional business into that area, we are concerned that there's going to be an increase in vandalism and resource theft and damage. So, I would ask that you take those under advisement and consider... And the, the third one, and, and this is probably one that's most important to the park, is, is the fact that a gas station and, and other types of businesses in such proximity to the entrance to a park, it's not conducive to the values that the park espouses. And, and so while, while gas stations and other businesses do co-locate at the entrance like Springdale, for example, in this case, it's, it's in such proximity that it doesn't give that welcome mat that visitors tend to expect, see as they come to the parks. And then finally, and this impacts me and my staff directly, is our limited security. We don't have a lot of law enforcement. That is our northern district, it has a small staff, we just don't have the staff to protect that twenty-four hours. And, and, and if we bring in additional business into that area, we are concerned that there's going to be an increase in vandalism and resource theft and damage. So I would ask that you take those under advisement and consideration and I can pass on this letter as well from the superintendent, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your comments.
Appreciate the comments. Thanks, Daniel. And you can leave those, thank you.
Somebody there at the back.
I recognize the gentleman on the rear row.
Afternoon Chairman and County Commissioners, my name is David Osborne, O-S-B-I-S-N-B-Y-O-R-N. And I am a resident at twenty-one oh five south, twenty-eight hundred east in New Harmony, just off of exit forty. My wife and family have been there for almost fourteen years, moved from Las Vegas. For this particular reason, we wanted a rural atmosphere, we wanted to get away from Vegas. But what I am going to speak to is I am the captain of New Harmony Volunteer Fire Department. I serve for almost over twenty-six years now as a full-time firefighter paramedic for Las Vegas Fire Rescue. I drive two hours from my home in New Harmony to Las Vegas to my fire station, which I just came back from today after my forty hour, forty-eight hour shift. If what is being proposed would be a great impact on our small, little volunteer fire department and we are responsible for whatever happens in that I-15 corridor, you bring in a Maverick gas station or a Black Bear diner or a three, four, five-story hotel, we're responsible for that. We have ten to twelve individuals that are volunteers, we don't get paid. We have pagers, this is what I have, this is how I respond to calls. We don't have a ladder truck or a high-rise hotel. Even if it has the fire sprinkler system, it's all new and modern, there's different things that can overcome, overwhelm a fire protection system and you need ladder trucks. We don't have that, we don't have the budget for that, we don't have the people for that.
Where would, where would the nearest ladder come from?
Cedar City or Hurricane. They have the two ladders. So that's easily twenty to twenty-five minutes response time for them. So my concern as a volunteer firefighter who responds to calls on I-15 to the residents in, in that area, to Colob, as the, the park ranger was just speaking to, we've responded there, this would most definitely potentially impact our smaller department that we could not do well. We would need something to help us out if that would happen. My desire is that it would not happen. Yes, sir.
So Captain, I've got another question. Tell me about the ages of your volunteers and whether or not they're, they're capable and qualified and have the equipment to do an interior fire attack.
So I, I spoke to this at the planning commission. Average age is well over fifty years of age. I think our youngest is probably in his late twenties, early thirties and there's only one of them, but average is over fifty, we have a few guys who are sixty. I am not bragging without a doubt, the most physically fit out of the ten or twelve of us. So just, that's how it is.
How did you determine that?
Pack test.
But no, that would, that would be taxing. It's not just the, the physicality of it, you know, high-rise fires, very physical, any fire is, can be very physical.
And I'm not meaning to ostracize anybody that's my age or anything, I'm sixty-five, I understand that, but I also understand that I'm not capable of doing some of the things that I could do as a younger man, so.
Like me.
Do you, do you find that those limitate? I, I think your time is up, since I'm asking you questions, you could stay there. Do those physical limitations impact their ability to fight a fire?
Most definitely. And, and, and not all, because they're volunteers, because quite frankly, you know, we, we have our training, everything, not everyone is, is certified as firefighter one or firefighter two. In fact, out of, out of the ten or twelve of us, there's only really about two or three of us that technically should be entering a burning building because we've had the training and the experience to do so.
But you couldn't do a three in, three out?
No, sir. Not, not, not technically, but that, it's actually two in and two out.
Two in, two out, three's better, but yeah, okay.
Yeah, but anyways, but no, we just, my concern, one of my concerns, other than me being a resident and liking the rural atmosphere, is as a firefighter, volunteer firefighter out there, this would potentially impact our operation considerably as this thing would build out and progress.
Okay, any more questions for David? Thank you, David.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Would anyone else like to address the commission? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Pamela Whitaker and I live at twenty-four ninety-seven east, fifteen hundred south, New Harmony. We've lived there for about twenty years ago, twenty years now. And I want to tell you about five years ago, I quit being a volunteer fireman. Would you want me?
You look pretty fit, I've got to say.
You'd want me protecting your house?
Hey, but we've talked about fire service.
Okay, what I did, about the only thing I did is at two o'clock in the morning, I went out and helped an emergency situation on the freeway. I quit because I was not qualified, I wasn't doing any good for it. I had, my heart was in the right place, but I wasn't efficient. I'm an example of what we have out there. I would hate to have any facility depend upon me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Others that would wish to address the commission? Yes, sir.
Commissioners, my name is Greg Patterson. I live at fifteen fifty-two south, Old Highway ninety-one. My family has lived here for a hundred and seventy years. And as you all know, St. George is in a water crisis. If this particular environment is allowed to continue, then the water impact for not only St. George, but our own area and for the park service will be forever changed. We need to look at how much water would be used by the infrastructure and the affluent that is produced and where does it go? As somebody has already said, water knows no boundaries. And there's already been a lot of problems from the southern part of the county, talking about what the northern part of the county is doing to the water quality. So if this is allowed to go in, what are these guys going to do for a sewer system? They're not going to have a treatment plant because that's too expensive. If they have settling ponds, those ponds will produce sludge and awful smell. That will impact the park and the quality of life of the people who live there.
Thank you. Chair recognizes the gentleman in the aisle.
Hello, my name is Robert Lemaster, L-E-M-A-S-T-E-R. And I live at one five five four South Badger Way, directly across the street from where they want to propose the septic system. And that's what bothers me is I live directly across the street from that. And if you look at the elevation, I'm down about eight feet from that existing lot. And if, if this goes through, I'd like to see it go back to the planning commission, maybe do away with the RV park and put the septic system over there. That's my proposal anyhow. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Shirley Solomon and I live at eighteen sixty-two south, twenty-two hundred east in New Harmony, off this exit. I would just like you to consider that this area is a unique area to Washington County. It's the only place where you could buy acreage and live close to two communities with opposing climates and activities. And the people move there because it's rural, because it's quiet, because it's safe and because there is no commercial, yet they are close to services in Washington, Hurricane and St. George. So it's actually a choice that's available nowhere else in the state of Utah. This interchange is a neighborhood and the commercial, the planned development is adjacent, back-to-back to neighborhoods and actually pokes out and turns a residential lot into a septic sewer area. It's next to a bus stop. Other commercial developments have an open space between them and residential areas. Our master plan, which we participated with the county on, suggests a minimum of services in the New Harmony Valley and those services do exist at exit forty-two with a gas station, a deli and a convenience store. Other things brought up in that plan is to maintain open space along washes and streams. The RV park is in a, a major wash from the Colobs to Ash Creek. And to have, if that went in, there would be requirements, bigger requirements in normal zoning. In closing, I just wanted to read, if you consider that when you drive north into Iron County, that it is dotted with abandoned vacant gas stations and do we really want the gateway to Washington County to be one of two abandoned vacant commercial developments? So I'm encouraging you to support recommendations that are made in our general plan, which we did, collaborated with you on and making. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
My name is Art Haynes, live up in Harmony Heights, one, one-one-two-seven south, seven hundred east. The last time you saw me here was our road project.
I remember.
Quick shout out that your, your road department did wonderfully these last snow storms. Thank you. I live in the heights, so I'd like to take a little higher view. I view that your role in this is to look at cost and benefit. Every new project has a cost to the county, negative impact on somebody, and it has a set of benefits. And it's your job, I believe, not to tell you what it is, but I believe it's your job to balance those costs and benefits and impacts. I believe that this development has no material benefit or little to the residents in New Harmony. It's providing services we already have and creating things we really don't need at a very strong negative impact. It'd be like putting a high-rise in that emblem for Washington County right in front of it. The county residents, I see no benefit that anybody down here in St. George gets from this. I, it escapes me what the benefit is. So the only real benefit accrues to the owners of the property, out-of-state tourists going up and down I-15 and some additional tax revenue. Accordingly, to me, the public benefits to anybody in Washington County are miniscule compared to the negative impact you're hearing from all of us on New Harmony. And yes, this is a special place, like nowhere else in Utah, maybe the whole southwest. And we really look to you to protect it. Please, please make a biased decision.
Thank you, Art. We've heard a lot of people speaking in opposition. Is there anybody who would like to speak in support of the proposed zone change? Any others that would like to address the commission on a topic that we have not yet heard?
Sorry, I was supposed to raise my hand. I'm sorry, I didn't need to do that.
Thanks, so you're not walking up? Or you want to speak? Hey, I recognize you.
Bob Hermanson, helping the owner out with this project and representing it this evening. Didn't know if there was, this was the forum or this is the time that you'd like us to come up and, and talk about the project a little bit, or if you would like to do that later.
Right, now this is a public hearing and we're giving people two minutes to talk about things that they like or would dislike about it and we're asking them not to repeat themselves. And so you've got two minutes if you want to speak in support of it.
Uh, two minutes. This is a planning document. This is a zone change that we're applying for. This is, this is more than likely not a today thing. This is a planning document that further illustrates what your current general plan is illustrating, which is a commercial area at this interchange. We are clearly just looking to add some additional entitlements to those based on the recommendations from the planning commission and other meetings and very strategically making this what we feel like is in harmony with the surrounding areas. And this is a future document to be used with the land going forward. Not, not necessarily today, or a hotel or RV park, those are allowed uses in our proposal, but they, we agree that this isn't going to get built tomorrow. That's not the intent of what we're trying to submit and what we're trying to talk about. We, we agree. This is an entitlement that the owner can move forward with and in the future, as they are needed, or if they're needed, they're allowable uses with, with rules that we feel like we've visited with the commission and the area to identify those things so that they're in harmony with what's needed. And so that's the, that's the part portion of, if there's any additional questions, happy to answer those.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to talk to you. My name is Dick Newsburg, twenty-seven oh five east, twenty-two hundred south. I have two topics. One has to deal with the, the environment that it brings. I walk my dog three hundred and sixty days out of the year, three or four miles at a whack. That adds up to over twenty-five hundred miles for the width of the vest each year. I follow her along the road as she hunts. So my concern and part of it comes up to where the, the park or where their land on building, we come within a half mile of that. My concern is all the ATVs, all the dirt bikes that are going to come out, they're going to be up and down those roads. We already have some of that. It's difficult to control a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit, that's out along Highway ninety-one. So this is going to be an issue. Nobody's going to be able to live with that kind of traffic. As we've already seen, some of it come up, it's just going to horribly get worse. Nobody's going to be there for fourteen days, not get out and exercise their ATVs on those roads, dirt roads either. That's a real problem. Second issue, it's kind of a funny one, one you guys can take home, you can tell the wife, the kids, the neighbors, you'll be laughing.
Thirty seconds.
This deals with the, the birth of a calf next door last spring. Calf turns out to be a steer. So three or four months later, when I watched the calf, as it tried to get up off the ground because the mother was licking it, it finally got its legs, it finally stood up. Then it went from there, see, looked for the udder and so forth. Three or four months later, the other day, I noticed I'm out there as well. One of the ten-year-old kids was there. I asked him, I says, have you named the calf yet? He says, oh yes, we've named him. I says, what do you call him? He says steak.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, please, please state your name and speak at the microphone so we can catch it on the, the recording.
Hey, I'm Sue Hinson and my address is two-nine oh five east, fifteen hundred south. Okay, I have a question. He said that all you wanted, he wants you to do is approve the zone change, but with approving that zone change, I'm under the understanding that that would approve the RV park, the hotel and all that, right?
No, not necessarily. It still have, everything would have to be built according to plan and detail as it went through. Commissioner Alquist, maybe you'd like to address that?
It shows a window of what they're desiring, but it doesn't automatically approve every building, everywhere and every use.
So do they have to come back and go through this whole thing again?
It would be a permitted use inside the zone.
It would be permitted, they would just have to show positioning and may have to provide other details.
But they don't have to say, we want to build a hotel, that's already approved. So what he's saying is it, if, it might not sell for fifteen years, but if it sells next week, then they can build the hotel and all that, right?
I would think that would be an allowed use.
But the process would be the, you know, the building, the, the architecture, the drawings of it would all have to go through the community development.
Right, so what he's saying is it's for the future, but it could be next week. Okay.
And again, I want to remind everybody, do not address topics that have already been addressed.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Kelson Parity, fifteen eighty-five south, twenty-eight hundred east. I lived in New Harmony for twenty years now, bought my property in ninety-five. I participated in Vision Dixie. I participated in Vision Dixie. Never once were we even concerned with major commercial. The concern with, when we did Vision Dixie, is we thought, maybe a quaint little coffee shop, something like that. Well, when Jules moved in to the Shelley Co., that's what we call it, because it's changed hands so many times, we considered that our little coffee shop. It gave us a rural-at-home feeling. We would have dates at lunch there at that very coffee shop. A large commercial is not appropriate for our exit. My husband and I were on the way home from St. George yesterday, and we have a sheriff sitting in front of our post box. The reason why he's there is the post box had been broken into from the back. That's the very spot where our kids are picked up and taken to school every day. Cart before the horse. We need to think about our protection of our community with fire and with police. I think these are big concerns. And not to beat the dead horse, but New Harmony Township and Check Shawnee Cliffs are both dark-skY communities.
We've talked about dark-sky, law enforcement, and fire, so I think we're done with those. Thank you. I saw you raise a hand. Do you want to speak? We've talked about crimes. Are you going to bring something new?
Well, it's my own personal experience in New Harmony about crime.
All right, let's hear it.
And about the fact that there...
I need your name?
My name is Pat Pfeiffer, and I used to live in Colob Branches. We moved because of crime, because it's close to the freeway. And each time we would call 911 non-emergency to get some help on issues up there, they would say, "Well, we're in Tocqueville. It's going to take us 20 to 30 minutes to get there." So when I start thinking about a commercial development and the crime that it will bring in, and somebody wants to call 911 emergency or non-emergency, where's the police? Where's the sheriff? It would take a long time to get here. And when we were here last month, talking to the commissioners about this, they said, "We'll look into that." But after that, they approved it. So are they going to look into that? Is anybody going to talk to the sheriff or the police to see what kind of support we can get with transits coming and going?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission?
Yeah, my name is Mike Chander. I live at 2106 South, 3000 East in New Harmony in Colob Branches. And I'd just like to point out that up at Exit 42, there already is an RV park that was established and never made it. It got completely built. They've never had anybody ever stay in that park. It's right next to a self-storage unit that also has been abandoned. And the gas station at Exit 42 has changed hands at least four to five times since I've lived there. And most of the reason that it changed its hands is because they don't make enough money. And for anybody to think that they can support that kind of infrastructure off of Exit 40, it's just going to be an abandoned eyesore that, you know, we don't want. So I hope you'll consider all that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Alan Wayman, and we are building a house in the Colob Ranch subdivision there. I was just curious if they were to build this, does it raise our property taxes? And, you know, I guess what kind of impact does it have on the residents?
Well, I'm not the assessor. I'm not the legislature, nor the school district, or the other taxing entities, so I can't speak for them.
That would be a big concern that I would list in addition to everything else.
The chair recognizes the lady in the center aisle.
My name's Emily J. Cox, and I live at 2097 South, 3000 East. Thank you for your time. I was really excited to come to the meeting the last time because I homeschool my daughter right now, and we learned a lot about government last year. And so it was exciting to think, oh, well, I brought her, because I'm like, this is a great opportunity for her to see local government in action. And I have to say, I walked away really disheartened. I know you guys see a lot more and know a lot more than us, and you have to, you do things that we don't see, and I obviously realize that. But it was a little disheartening to see that the whole board approved it when there were so many that were not wanting it, and there was just this really, really small handful that did. And so I just have to say that I hope you'll listen to our voice, because I know that is the majority, that is the majority that doesn't want this. And so, and just, I ask for that. Thank you.
Thank you. You've got a cute daughter. Okay, seeing no further comments, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll open this up for commission consideration of ordinance number 2019 1148-0, and ordinance rezoning a certain portion of Washington County located on the west side of I-15 at Exit 40 near New Harmony from A-20 agricultural 20-acre minimum lot size zone and RA-5 residential agricultural 5-acre minimum lot size zone to the PDC planned development commercial zone hereinafter, fully described in this ordinance. Commissioners?
Well, I just want to thank everybody for being here and participating in this process. You know, I think it was two or three months ago, the property owner came before us at that time for this, for this zone change. And at that time, we recognized the sensitivity of the area, and we asked them to take a step back. We took a look at our zoning at that time and actually created this planned unit commercial. But as I've thought about this quite a bit and read through the material, and, you know, it's a real tough one for me, because this is a very important process that we're engaged in, because land use zoning is kind of finding that balance between both sides of the property fence, as I like to say. And I am a very adamant property rights individual, and so, you know, naturally, I want to see people get the most beneficial use of their property as possible. But in deliberating in my mind about this, I think Mr. Adair brought up, was it Adair?
Yeah.
Brought up some thoughts that I've had, which is, at this current time, it just doesn't seem to me that the community has what you would consider the infrastructure to support this zone change. And what I mean by that is, there's several issues. Obviously, fire is one. And we know, as county commissioners, and of course, we have Chief Gooman here from the Hurcan Valley, you know, it's not just the New Harmony District that is struggling. I mean, in the way that you're struggling, I mean, Pine Valley and other districts are having the same challenge. So that is a challenge, though, when you talk about public safety, you talk about the impact. I think water and a small water, I know that in the notes, we have, we have, there is the shares to support it, but as we've found, this is a small water system. I have concerns whether they could meet the needs of that. I do have concerns about the runoff. But more importantly, I just, in my mind, as I've thought about this, and we have read all of your emails, all of them were passionate, some were more persuasive than others. So, and there were citizens that supported it as well. I'm not saying, I just feel that, I believe, it's, as somebody that's in this decision-making body, is that there, because some people said, there's an expectation that there should never, ever be commercial in the valley. I think that that would be unrealistic. But I do think I agree with what Mr. Adair said, that now is not necessarily the time. It needs to have a kind of a more organic process. The community needs to be maturing, as I would say. And we need to have a discussion, because technically, we're your city council, right? Because you live in unincorporated areas. We need to have a discussion about some infrastructure issues up there. And I'd hate to go have a discussion about fire and then have everybody look at me and go, "Well, gee, we don't trust you, because you just allowed a commercial to go in, and that's the reason you want to upgrade fire," things like that. So I just, at this time, I can't find myself supporting this zone change.
Any other thoughts? Commissioner Alquist?
You know, I attended the planning commission meeting, and I give a lot of credit to the planning commissioners who listen and who have a very small paycheck for what they do. And so you often wonder, well, why would somebody want to be a planning commissioner when they're, I guess, taken to be less listening and thought-provoking, as well as studious, when I know that our planning commission is, are all of those things? Every member cares deeply about what they're asked to do and what we have assigned them with, and our planning office the same. And I can remember, as a planning commissioner for St. George City, 16 years, and chair of 11 of those, that many times I would get a phone call at home, and someone would say, you know, "How could you vote that way?" And within a few minutes of them understanding the situation, they said two things. One, I would never want to be a planning commissioner. And two, now I see why. Sometimes those things are legal issues, because the laws are here to protect both sides, as Victor talked about, of the coin. But most of the time, I think that they were so single-minded that they couldn't see the broader picture. So it was last month, when I was standing in the back, and there were several agitated people there, I didn't know if they needed to know...
Passionate, we call them passionate.
Passionate, yeah, I like that term.
Well, I didn't know if they needed to know where the restroom was, but really, they were just hopping around. And I heard one very distinctly say this, "I don't know why we're making any effort at all. They have already decided. I would hope and pray that you would not think that way." Because many, many times, we analyze and think and discuss various issues, and we see both sides of the coin, and very few times, me personally, have I been so adamant about one thing that I won't listen to the other side. And whether that's in community service, or church service, or business, I believe that we were all elected to represent not only the citizens of Washington County, but also the opinions of the citizens of Washington. So whether based on fact, or based on their personal desires for one way or the other, we still listen. You know, there's many moving parts in a county. It's not just a sleepy little organization, whether the commission or the employees. And certainly, as undersheriff will tell you, it's not a sleepy county when it comes to the things he has to do. But all these moving parts come together, and I want you to know that foremost, in our thought pattern of how they work together is public safety and the balance of services, as well as the quality of life. And there's no doubt that Washington County is blessed, but therefore, the more blessed you are, sometimes the more under siege you are. And in your small community, though not small in stature or desire, you've seen people that want to go through and get up to Richie Flat, or go the back way to Pinto, or whatever. And they look at your speed sign that says 25, and they read 52, you know? So we get that. But let me just explain a little bit longer without being too laborious here, but, you know, counties are unique when it comes to development, and usually much more fragile, and rely heavily on what sparse populations and resources could be available for that development. You've said that tonight. Unlike cities or larger municipalities that have had years of infrastructure and higher taxes, or at least many ways of gathering funds from building, and sometimes, if you drive through Little Valley, you might say excessive building, but nevertheless, they can tap into a resource that sometimes counties don't have. There's a reason why somebody incorporates. They have the ability to stand on their own. Sometimes counties don't have the ability in areas to necessarily stand on their own. We've talked about some of those issues tonight. So it's usually a stretch if somebody's going to develop in county. Now, I got to admit that some counties, and we go to our Utah County Association meetings, they would die to have somebody come and develop something in their county, because they have already suffered great losses and don't necessarily have the benefit of I-15. Or they don't have the benefit of larger population centers like Hurcan, Washington, St. George, even Cedar City, although we don't necessarily count them until we annex them. But in all seriousness, there are places in Utah that are dying, because they don't have what we may offer, whether scenery, national park, what have you. I think any one of us would agree that this project, if it were on the Exit 13, would be a beautiful gateway to the area. I mean, Exit 13 is a logical place for something like this, and even though they've already put a Maverick and some other things there. But I do want to tell you that we have to admit that growth has some benefits, but it also has some challenges. But where do these services go? And I think when the planners of I-15 came along, they said, "We need to have an off-ramp there, because it's the west entrance to Zion National Park." For a lot of reasons, they didn't want to just leave it up the road two miles, or down the Road 10, to try and access the Fingers area. That's probably why that off-ramp was there. And even though there are, there's some logic, wherever off-ramps are, there should be some commercial usage. But I've watched the usage of the gas station at Cheyenne's hometown on the southern entrance to Summit, Utah, completely went away. I liked buying gas there, because it was the cheapest in the state. That's maybe because they were also trying to sell gummy bears and drinks, and no way to get them there but lower gas prices. Nevertheless...
Maybe they went out of business, because their gas was too cheap.
Too cheap? Well, they, I don't know, we'll have to ask Cheyenne. But nevertheless, the greatest value there is, if somebody wants a $50,000 carport, it's still available, I think. Nevertheless, you know, not every off-ramp has to have all those services. Prior zone change request was for C2 and C3, and I want you to know, it was right here where the applicant's representative at that time said, "I don't really know what they're going to put in there." It kind of sparked something that I want to give some kudos to the applicant for, because just C2 and C3, I don't think this is your daily reading as to what uses can be in a C2 or C3 zone. But it was a whole lot of things, and some of which, some of you might say, would be worse than what this proposal has offered. So it was kind of a spark, and I credit all of you citizens, I credit the applicant, that caused us to say, "Well, let's look closer at our fragile county, and our fragile way of developing, and making sure our Ts are crossed and our Is are nodded." And therefore, tonight, we'll be discussing, after all of you leave, and perhaps some will stay, I hope you do, this very process of asking... hope you do, this very process of asking a developer to come in and say what they want to do upfront. So that you're not just hoping that C2 and C3 uses could be, all of a sudden, springing up in an area where you said, "Do allow that." So I hope you know, as citizens, that this is an opportunity for you to come and exercise your rights, but that also, you get to see, uh, beforehand, what could be in an area before it's built. Um, so, I credit the applicant as a valiant effort to give what I kind of call the poster child, or a PD development plan. Because as we move forward, I think everyone who wants to come under that zone, we have something to look back upon and say, you know, they did it right. It may be thirty, forty years from now, that that actually, something like that happens there, but throughout the county, it might happen somewhere else. So, I would say at this point, that, um, something of quality needs to be at all of our interse, our interchange off-ramps, what have you. And not necessarily ahead of time, but at the right time. And so I'm like Victor, and would not support this application or this, uh, request.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, I think, in the interest of time, I will forego with my twenty-five pages of comments. But I, too, would like to applaud all of you for your civic engagement and communicating with us, uh, both for and against. And some of these decisions we have to make are difficult, and they do require making a complex decision, and weighing and weighting, uh, conflicting and competing interests. And so thank you for taking the time to engage. Uh, I was most intrigued by Captain Osborne's comments, and, and I'm glad he caught me. I was just testing him on that three in, three out. You know, I knew all along it was two. But, uh, anyway, it's, it's important for me that if we're going to let commercial facilities go in there, that, uh, we have the infrastructure developed to keep those, uh, not only the infrastructure, but most importantly, the, the people who might be renting those rooms, or being in the RV pads, keeping them safe, and because of the response times. And, and I applaud Chief Coleman, and, uh, I know the Iron County Fire Chief, and I can't think of his name right now, but, but they would come down in, in a minute. The problem is, they can't get there in a minute. Uh, but they, they are great partners, and, and they do, uh, bolster the response capabilities of some of our smaller departments. Uh, with those comments, I will go ahead and, uh, ask for a motion.
Chair?
Yes.
Can I just say one more thing? And I would hope all of you citizens would do this, uh, kind gesture. You know, the applicants, uh, I don't believe they meant any harm, and I don't think that they were off to ruin the town like, uh, Blazing Saddles. Hate to admit, I ever saw that movie.
But it is good to know you have seen that movie.
It was, it was interesting. In, in high school, I said, "That's the funniest movie." And I went on a two-year mission for my church, and I came home and said, "That's the worst movie." I don't know if I changed, or they changed the movie while I was gone. Anyway, but, um, I, I would hope you would look to the fact that we, we rely on services that are here, because developers take a gamble. They, they purchase things, they develop plans, they go through all sorts of processes to actually serve other people. And when you think about that, where would we be if even 200 years ago, we were all individually responsible for every single thing that went in our mouth, or put a roof over our head? Communities developed, because people were willing to say, "I'll open a store, and I'll have a farm, and I'll sell goods, and I'll get cows, and I'll worry about them when it's 12 degrees out on Harmony's plains," and, and et cetera, et cetera. So at some point, we have to give some credit to people who said, "I'm going to start a subdivision, and I'm going to subdivide lots where every single one of you live," with the exception of the 170-year-old person here. He looks really good for being 170.
No, 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 my family.
I know, I know, I know, I know. They're within the water. Nevertheless, would you please give some kudos out for those who make efforts to provide us with services?
Mr. Chairman, as well, um, as we noticed, there's, there was kind of a theme in some of the correspondence that we were getting back in regards to fire, in regards to the on-ramp, transportation, in regards to wastewater. And so we did ask, uh, a few people to be here from UDOT, uh, as well as, um, uh, Mike Chandler was here from, um-
Ash Creek.
Ash Creek, just to be available to answer those questions, as, as-
If, if we felt the need to ask.
If we felt. And so I want to acknowledge the fact that they were willing to be here-
And Chief Coleman as well.
Yeah. And, and we should also stress the fact that even though they feel like they got two minutes tonight, and that that was not fair necessarily, we did review everything that the applicant has put forth, and read their entire scenario and their plan. And, um, you know, it, it's, it was brilliantly done and, and well-presented, and their voice was also heard, I want you to know, through the things that they proposed.
Okay. Thank you. Is there, uh, a Commissioner willing to make a motion on the consideration at hand?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we, um, deny the ordinance, uh, 2019-1148-0, an ordinance rezoning a certain portion of Washington County located on the west side of I-15, exit forty, New Harmony, from a 20 agricultural, 20-acre minimum lot size zone, and R5A residential agricultural, five-acre minimum lot size zone, um, zone to a PDC planned development commercial zone hereafter, fully described in the ordinance. I make a motion that we-
Thank you for the motion, Commissioner Iverson.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we deny, uh, the ordinance change, 219-1148-0. All in support of the denial, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. The next item on our agenda is another public hearing.
I just can't get enough of these.
It's amazing what we're getting here. So we'll pause for a minute, follow up. Please, please keep quiet. We've got quite a bit of meeting still to go on. Mr. Patterson here.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg.
Okay, item number seven. This is a public hearing amending the PD's on procedures and requirements for rural recreation grounds and facilities. Scott, would you like to come up and, uh, introduce this topic for us?
Commissioners, um, as comments have been made in this meeting already, uh, talking a little bit about the efforts the county has made to address some of, um, just as we've been growing, and changes have been happening in the county with, uh, pressures for development, is how to more appropriately handle them, and, in an appropriate way. And so, staff and the commission have been, uh, doing a lot of research and looking into how other communities handle, um, different types of development, and it's often through a PUD or a PD development zone. Um, we have, our previous code, uh, was a little cumbersome as far as the process, uh, or the approval process for development. We feel like we've streamlined that process, but everything is still vetted out and worked through. Um, we've gone through, and also with some of the rural recreation grounds that previously were, uh, able to be approved as a conditional use, knowing that the conditional use is an administrative decision rather than a legislative decision. It seemed that it was more appropriate to move the rural recreation grounds into, uh, a legislative role, and, and allow, uh, Planning Commission and County Commission to be able to have more say and oversight as to how things develop that way. Um, and so, this has gone before the Planning Commission. They've also held a public hearing and received comments back on it. And, uh, the ordinance that is before you is a result of the comments that were received, um, both by staff and the Planning Commission, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Well, thank you. Uh, I think we'll hold our questions for just a minute, but thank you for that introduction. Uh, can the ordinance requires that on a ordinance change, that a public hearing be held? And, uh, this is part of the notice that was published, that interested persons are encouraged to attend this meeting and express any opinions regarding the proposed zone change. You may, yeah, it's, it's still on the right one, believe it or not. Uh, uh, you may express your opinions in writing prior to the meeting. Your written comments can be sent to the commission office. And, uh, as with this previous hearings, we would ask that we, uh, keep comments to two minutes, that we not, uh, make any redundant, uh, coverage of topics that have already been discussed. So, I will open the hearing on the proposed, uh, consideration of ordinance, uh, 2019-1114-0, where we're talking about our, uh, rural recreation and planned development zone. Is there anyone that would like to step forward, comment?
I think like any good teacher, you should just call on someone.
So I will, uh, declare the hearing closed, and, uh, thank any comments. We did receive comments on that, uh, that were emailed and, and communicated via telephone. So our next item is consideration of ordinance number 219-1149-0, and ordinance amending the planned development zone procedures and requirements, and creating a PD zone for rural recreation grounds and facilities. Uh, Mr., do you have any comments or questions for Scott?
Well, I think this is a good change. And, um, so if it's my understanding, Scott, I don't want to misstate the history, but basically, we were allowing rural recreation to take place in our open transitional areas, uh, when, when the applicant came in. So it was a conditional use that they could, um, could apply for. And we started to run into a few challenges with that, that it, people could just apply for it, and there was kind of some unseen consequences. And I, I believe that putting this ordinance will, will allow us to get more clarity in working with the different applicants on, uh, making sure that what they're doing fits with that environment. And, uh, especially since a lot of rural recreation happens in some fairly sensitive areas of the county. And, uh, there's a lot of creative entrepreneurs out there, and, and we want to encourage them, but, you know, we don't want it to look, um, like an abandoned hippie village, or whatever. I mean, there's nothing against hippies, but, uh, we're not, you know, um, you get my point, is that we wanted to make sure that we could have a say in, in, um, making sure there was a quality product, especially in these sensitive areas.
I think this hurls back, for me, to the Vision Dixie principles that we first began in, in 2004, and '05, and '06, and ultimately culminated with the, uh, Public Lands Bill that was signed by President Obama in 2009, uh, about wanting to protect our signature scenic landscapes, view sheds. Uh, Washington County is home to, uh, the Great Basin, Colorado Plateau, and the Mojave Desert. It really creates some unique areas, and people want to come and visit them, and I think that's very, very important. But as we allow, uh, rural recreation in some of these areas, I think we have to be respectful of the trailheads and things like that. We do not do anything that will adversely or permanently impact that visitor experience. And so, that's why I think this is, is actually a good ordinance, and why I will support it. Mr. Alquist, any comments?
Well, as you know, we've been looking at all of our ordinances, and this one in particular, with Scott's help and his team, as well as our, of our attorneys, Natalie, and Brian's gotten in on the end of it, and it's been great to have him, as well as input from the other commissioners. But just for the record, you know, it's, it's shorter, it's more succinct. Uh, having someone come in and say, "Well, what can I do there?" Similar to the last public hearing we had. I mean, this already deals with, in a general title on, what, page nine, utilities. Well, you might think, well, why would utilities be an issue out on 100 acres up by Holob somewhere? Well, it can become an issue. Um, there's a reason why they didn't have Woodstock a second time.
That is a great point.
So, for example, it addresses water, sewer, septic, fire, power, and then continues on, by the way, the entire thing you have in your packet includes the crossed-out sections of the old, old ordinance that don't apply anymore. So, most of it's all crossed out.
Yeah, so see, don't be scared by all the pages.
Yeah. So, but it does jump into outside storage, and trash, and junk, and inoperable vehicles, uh, all things that I don't think, if we got off the beaten path on some dirt road up on Holob, and said, "Hey, I'm going to my, um, you know, campsite," or whatever, that you would want to see along the, the road. And so it has, you know, standards of all sorts of things, some landscape. You know, it's not meant to be big government, it's just meant to be smart government, especially in our sensitive areas. So that's why it's been brought before us, and, and, uh, I think it's a good step.
Thank you.
I do, too.
Uh, Commissioners, if there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion for, uh, ordinance number 2019-1149-0.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2019-1149-0.
I'll second that with a comment that Victor just stole my baby.
Oh, that's right, it's your turn.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
You got to be fast, if you want to be first, Commissioner Alquist. It has been moved and seconded that, uh, we adopt ordinance 2019-1149-0, and ordinance amending the planned development zone procedures and requirements, and creating a PD zone for rural recreation zones and facilities. All in support of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you for your hard work on all of this.
Thanks, Scott, appreciate you.
This is not easy, going through these ordinances and trying to get them all up to speed. Item number nine, consideration of resolution number R2019-2534, approving a memorandum of understanding regarding the environmental impact statement for the Northern Corridor project and renewal of the Washington County Desert Tortoise incidental, incidental take permit. Cameron?
Thank you. Cameron Rogan, Washington County HCP. So, uh, this resolution will approve an MOU between, um, ourselves, UDOT, the BLM, the Fish and Wildlife Service, all who are, um, going to be working together on a joint EIS. There are currently two applications pending. Um, one is from the county to renew our HCP permit. The other is a right-of-way application that UDOT submitted in support of a right-of-way that goes through a portion of the reserve. That's why these two projects are kind of intertwined, and they're going to be analyzing them at, at the same time. So, this resolution, or this MOU, will be, will allow the county to kind of serve i- in a support role, as these agents, agency partners, um, evaluate all, all the different things that they have to look at, and the analysis that they need to do, to come to the right decisions. We have no decision-making in the process, but we will s- serve in like a support role, and provide, um, any information that they need as they make those decisions.
Cameron, uh, just on a related note, when is the first scoping meeting scheduled, and where will that be?
Very good question. We just heard very recently that it will be December 17th, at the Dixie Convention Center, from 4:30 to 7:30. And we're anticipating that there may be a notice of intent as early as this Thursday.
Correct. Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr., is there any comments on the, uh, memorandum of understanding, and?
Well, I know Brian hasn't been involved as much, but Eric has.
Brian, you're just itching over there. What, what is it you want to say?
Oh, I was nodding to Cameron, saying, "Thanks for taking care of that." Oh, I was nodding to Cameron saying, thanks for taking care of that.
Chairman, I'll move that we consider the resolution R2019-2534, approving a memorandum of understanding regarding the environmental impact statement for the Northern Corridor project and renewal of the Washington County Desert Tortoise incidental take.
Thank you, Commissioner Almquist.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Iverson. It has been moved and seconded that we support resolution R2019-2534. All in support of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number 10, consideration of resolution number R2019-2535, a resolution approving a feasibility study regarding a public transit system from St. George to Zion National Park. I believe Commissioner Almquist, you were going to speak to this.
Yeah. You know, feasibility studies are kind of like going to class one day to see if you would like it. And a lot of college students do that. You know, they, they go and they go, hey, I would love to stay here. Or they look at the syllabus, and that's what we're trying to do. Because we're trying to say, you know, are we going to really like this? Is this going to work? Because lots of government things are just dumb. And it's because they didn't think it through, or hire professionals who already work in that field. And so like in New York, I, instead of being limited to one 12-ounce pot, I just buy two 12-ounce pots. I mean, we don't need to have rules and regulations about things that don't work effectively. And this is such a huge decision. It involves quality of air, the amount of traffic, parking. I believe that when we meet together, our meetings, that we have great individuals with a lot of knowledge, you know, Myron's here, you know, we have Dean in the back, and others that know about traffic. But we also rely on others who have seen it in a lot of different areas. So with that, I make the motion that we approve resolution R2019-2535, approving a feasibility study regarding a public transit system from St. George to Zion National Park.
I'll second that with just a little more explanation that, that really what we have is, back in June, the County Commission passed a transportation option for the county that, that provides some revenue for the possibility of having a transit from St. George to Zion's. And, but as we're looking at that, and we're working with our partners, and we're working with the MPO, we've never done this before. And so it's just critical, I think, that we kind of have a clear understanding of what the costs would be, not just today, because we do know the state of Utah has available to us about $15 million. And we also know that we have revenue that's been earmarked through that option for transit. But we need to make sure that, that when we commit to that, we're, we're making the commitment that's not, that we know what that commitment is. We don't want to bite off a $60 million commitment and only have $30 million to fund it over a certain amount of years. So I will second that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Iverson. I will just say, this is exciting, having UDOT put forward this opportunity is, is one that I really think that we need to study and look at. It would just be, I think, ultimately in the county's interest to have that running. Just like you, I want to make sure that it's economically feasible. And although we passed that little tax increase, only 20% of that basically comes to the county. 80% of it goes to the communities. And so we have to find out how much we can rely upon from the different community partners that will make that route either viable or, or not. So it has been moved and seconded to support resolution R2019-2535, a resolution approving a feasibility study regarding a public transit system from St. George to Zion National Park. All in support of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number 11, consideration of resolution number R2019-2536, a resolution approving tourism funds to Santa Clara for lights at the Little League fields. And maybe I'd let you just tell us what we're looking at, and what you have taken to the Tourism Tax Advisory Board.
All right. Well, first off, commissioners, thank you for talking with us tonight. I'm Brad Hayes, Santa Clara City Parks and Rec. Earlier this year, I had the Power Department go in and check out our ballfield lights. We have two Little League lights down below. They, they were put in in 1980 by the Snow Canyon Little League. They're the home of the Snow Canyon Little League for the majors and minors boys. Those fields support this gunlock, Chippewa's Reservation, Ivans, Western St. George, and Santa Clara. So they're not just Santa Clara fields. And also, on the tourism side, we, in the 1819 season over a year period, those fields were used for 13 tournaments and 335 games. You know, so they, they have a very strong commercial value. And based on the calculations from the tourism board, it was about $756,000 in, in revenue brought to the county. So we hope you approve the lights. We've taken out all the lights and the poles, the, the fields are dark. You know, we're not able to use them for tournaments until we get the new lights in. So the city would certainly appreciate your support.
Thank you, Brad, and thank you for making those fields available as widely as you do, and for especially teams that might be coming from out of the area. Kevin, do you have any comments, or has Brad adequately addressed it?
Yeah, I, Kevin knows with the impact on the tourism side with the amount of teams and that that are coming in. And if they came before our tourism board and presented the proposal, and they, the board recommended that we look forward with this to support.
Thank you, Kevin, for that report. Thank you, Brad.
Shedding some light on that, Kevin.
Okay, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution R-2019-2536, resolution approving tourism funds to Santa Clara for lights at the Little League fields.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to support resolution R2019-2536. All in support of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number 12, consideration of resolution number R2019-2537, a resolution appointing board members to the Angel Springs Special Service District. And commissioners, I would be happy to speak to this. The Angel Springs Special Service District exists in the Leeds area. It's to provide culinary water. It's been a district that has been excellent for quite some time, and I think they do a really super job. In fact, unlike children, you know, if your children are quiet, it always makes you wonder what they're up to. But I really like it when a special service district just does what it's supposed to do, and it doesn't bring any attention to itself. It has been recommended that we appoint Troy Lynn Benson and MJ Crystal to be appointed to the board. And this resolution states that these vacancies were advertised according to state statute, and their terms would expire on December 31st, 2019. And so this would reappoint them.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion that you just made.
Okay. I'll take mine as a making the motion in support of.
I saw that.
All right. All in support of the motion to appoint Troy Lynn Benson and MJ Crystal, to terms expiring December 31st, 2023, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number 13, consideration of resolution number R2019-2538, a resolution appointing board members to the Pine Valley Local District. Mr. Iverson?
Mr. Chairman, you know, it's that time of year as we close out that we appoint a lot of people to different boards. And I just have to thank, it's incredible that we live in a community, that we have so many quality people that are willing to step up and, and go to these meetings. And so this is for the Pine Valley Local District. And the, the names that we are bringing forward today are Larry Gardner, Alan Cannon, and Frank Davy to serve on that Pine Valley Board.
Second.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we approve resolution R2019-2538, appointing Larry Gardner, Alan Cannon, and Frank Davy, with terms expiring on December 31st, 2023. All in support of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number 14, consideration of resolution number R2019-2539, a resolution reappointing members to the Southern Utah Shooting Sports Park Advisory Board. Mr. Iverson, you seem to be on a roll.
Yeah. So I'd like to, this board oversees and gives counsel back on our shooting sports park. And the names that I'd like to place in nomination to be appointed to that board is George Geo, Pete Davidson, Jill Hamlin, and Lance Gifford.
Thank you.
Second.
Most has been moved, seconded, in support of resolution R2019-2539, a resolution reappointing George Geo, Pete Davidson, Jill Hamlin, and Lance Gifford, with terms expiring December 31st, 2023. All in support of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number 15, consideration of resolution number R2019-2540, a resolution reappointing members to the Southwest Utah Board of Health.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we table this. We're not quite ready to proceed forward with that.
Second.
Thank you, commissioners. It has been moved and seconded that we table the resolution reappointing members to the Southwest Utah Board of Health. All in support of tabling, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. It is tabled. Item number 16, consideration of resolution R2019-2541, a resolution appointing members to the Washington County, and I'm saying this carefully because I don't want Commissioner Almquist making a joke about it, Noxious Weed Board, not the Weed Board.
You know, it's, it's funny that you should say, the nicest people kill weeds. And Dale Goobler, what a fantastic...
What kind of people smoke weed?
They're nice after, I guess. I don't know. But Dale is awesome, and as you know, served the county for 23 years plus, and did a great job in eradicating weeds in many places, and just keeping ahead of what is considered a continual onslaught of things that are not good for us or the environment. And so he liked to get on to the board, and I think that's smart, because he provides that sort of institutional knowledge to help Derek Spanlove and others that already served there. So these two appointments would be absolutely perfect to help in that battle.
And I will second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, commissioners. It has been moved that we support resolution R2019-2541, a resolution appointing Dale Goobler and Derek Spanlove to the Noxious Weed Board, Washington County Noxious Weed Board, with terms ending December 31st, 2023. All in support of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number 17, our last item, the commissioners' report, since I've already got the mic and I'm speaking, I would just like to say what an honor it has been to work with all of our employees and department heads past year, and especially speaking for myself, the other two commissioners in our office, staff, county administrator Nicole Fellshaw, our attorneys that keep us on the path. Sometimes we, we start to wander off, and they just gently nudge us back on. And so Brian, thank you for that. But we have amazing employees and department heads, and I just think it'd be remiss at this time of year if we didn't acknowledge their effort and everything they do for the benefit of the county and its citizens.
Absolutely.
I'd echo that. This is a great time of year. I love Thanksgiving, and, and just a lot to be thankful for, and especially what a great county and great people we have. So thank you.
And we should echo the fact that we've had a great chairman, and that who has taught me so much in my first year. It's amazing that it's almost gone that long, you know, it's, time flies, doesn't it?
Yeah.
And wish Dean all the best, as tomorrow he is still a county commissioner, but goes in for some very sensitive care for him, and his dear wife Lorene is here, and what a, we, we know you'll have a happy holiday because there's mending.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I really appreciate you.